And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Thank you, Gaff. Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's council meeting. For those attending remotely, cameras in the council chambers are set up to show those attending in person. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice the picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click the button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand with the budget allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands on its foundation, and to the school of liberty and justice for all.
Would you please follow law?
Mayor Scally.
Here.
Counselor Dillaba. Counselor Fisher. Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Reisch.
Here.
Counselor Scamperly.
Here.
Corn present.
Bill should be here in just a minute. We have two presentations tonight, and we will begin with City Manager Stephen Jolly.
Council in your packet is an updated version of the spreadsheet we spoke about the last meeting, just trying to get us reconciled with the capital fund. So, which we've got as a chronological order of each and every project that is currently ongoing on the city. Some of these are very near closing, but I just wanted you all to have this. So this lines out for everybody what the project estimates or costs were, what grant money is coming in from what source, and then what the city's required match on each of these projects will be. So this is something for you to review. We'll ask to transfer the amount of money to reconcile this account when we do the mid-year budget review in July. But in summary, we'll need to transfer about $600,000 to recapture the city match for some of these projects. As we've gone through and reviewed each one of these, I couldn't pinpoint specifically that there's anything necessarily we could have done a whole lot different other than, for instance, and we'll just use the first project as an example, the Diamond National Project. This project started on the planning process 2014-15. So by the time we did, we got the grant, we do the work to get the estimate. It was delayed a couple of times, then COVID happened. Here we are eight years later, we're just doing that work this year. So at what point was it appropriate that the cities match $59,497 be transferred from the general funding, what budget to the capital fund? So obviously, in cash-strapped years, you want to only move and budget the money you have to. So again, this is an example of something you could say, well, we should have budgeted the money back in 2014 or 15 or 16 when the project got going. But the reality is, again, we're just doing it now. So there'd have been $60,000 sitting there this whole time being dormant. So again, as you get to review these, I think every project is now listed in here. It's pretty self-explanatory. Right up to present day, we've taken you up to the project East David Street, which really is in design at this point, it's not really a project. But I wanted to ensure that we captured, as we move into preparing for the 2023 budget cycle, that this has got to be something we consider every year of budget time. Is there money that needs to be budgeted in the general fund to make up the city's match? So in summary, what we'll be looking at is about $600,000 to capture projects from 2020 back, and for 2021 back, rather. And then a decision for council will be the $706,000 city contribution towards the first phase of the ready that will be required. Do we want to go ahead and also include that in the money transfer? So we'll ultimately have all of our projects to current day caught up, and the capital fund will have all the appropriate money set to it that it needs. And then, as we look to the 2023 budget, you'll see, you know, that's where we'll have some decisions to make at budget time. For instance, if we end up needing a maximum $3 million match for Phase Two of the Ready project, what portion of that do we want to budget versus do we want to plan the long-term bond for? Which, again, then we need to plan the budget for the payment. So I think this gives us kind of the, one of the questions that seems to, you know, be out there all the time is, again, what have we put in, what do we have left, where's the status, et cetera? I think this gives council all that. So, you know, having to make up $600,001 shot is, you know, difficult, but it's a good period for us, obviously, because we do have the surplus in the, you know, in the fund balance, if you will, to be able to do that. And that's certainly one of the things we wanted to be able to do was make sure that we've paid up everything to present date. And again, I think as you go across all these projects, you'll see a lot of, they're all projects that started in some form several years ago, but most of them are really just coming to some level of execution. And then again, you know, things like 212 Ford Street is something that was not a budget plan last year, but we made a decision to use budget surplus. So there's some things that have just occurred now. Shade Roller Cleanup is another one, $292,000. So again, of that $600,000, close to 300 is something we just decided to do. So again, I think, you know, it's a good outcome to something that we had as an unknown. But I do, what I do want to caution council with, you know, we'll talk about this more when we do a sales tax update though, is, you know, the discussion about the fund balance, and again, I just quickly want to do math, at 6.1 million is where our fund balance sits. Our recommendation will be to maintain $2.5 to $3 million as a contingency fund balance. You know, that money which the city sits there for emergencies, crisis, et cetera. So if you use that logic, let's say $3 million, that really gives us $3 million of something of what does council, you know, want to do or need to do. There is no requirement that we have to spend that money. And again, I think as we spoke at the last meeting, if we took one option and we use some of that money to create capital reserve funds in the fire department, the DPW, the police department, for the large purchases that, you know, that happen every five, seven, 10, 15 years, that would chew up some of it. So I think there's plenty of places. I don't think there's any windfall of money that shouldn't be looked at as any golden goose that the city's sitting on. It just should be used as an opportunity to fix some things. And again, if there's another $3 million and we're looking at a $3 million match on the Ready Fund, maybe council wants to look at using some or all of that to go towards that instead of bonding. My concern with any continued borrowing is, again, just that, you know, we're looking at, we know it's going to be a deficit coming into 2023. So adding a payment to that is just adding something else that further contributes to that. So I think this is all working together well. You know, we're sitting here in June, we're going to do the mid-year budget review in July, and then, you know, we'll be starting budgets August, September, October. So I think this is giving council all the information it needs to be able to make, you know, truly informed decisions with all the information. Andrea and Angela have done an extensive amount of work on this. Everyone's here, if there's questions, we can answer now. Otherwise, feel free to email as you get to read this, digest it, and we can get back. And then what our plan will be is at the second meeting in July, when we do the mid-year budget review and do the request for budget modification, the amount of money needed to balance the capital fund will be in that request.
I think it's a good idea to pay up our past debts, get things cleaned up, and then move on with new projects. You have a presentation on sales tax?
Just want to check with Counselor Kennedy, any questions on this?
No, all of that.
Can we get this put on like with the minutes? When we do the minutes, because right now this isn't on the agenda, is it?
Yes, sir.
We read, yes, sir.
All right, great.
And it will be included in the minutes as well, just so you're aware.
Any other presentations?
Oh, yes, sir. So let Angela start off. We want to just give an update of where we are with sales tax. I know there's been some discussions. I saw a rather snarky letter to the editor written by somebody who continues to want to over-predict what we're doing with the sales tax. I can't assure council any more than we've done. We've been as upfront, we've been as candid, we've been as predictatory as we could be in a situation that's got far and away more variables. And quite honestly, adding any more guessing, more conjecture, more opinion to this other than waiting for the data to roll in over the next five or six months, and we'll have a good five, six, seven months of data before we do the final budget, is really prudent. Trying to predict what is going to happen in a sales tax formula that we haven't used in over 20 years in an economy right now that is anything but stable is really just, it's just fictional budgeting, and I don't want to continue us in any of that direction. So the numbers we've given you, I think, are accurate. Angela will review where we are now, and then I want to, I just want to recap the projections we've given you on where we think the deficit may lie going forward into 2023. Those numbers certainly are updated from when we did brief you in February, but they're only growing, they're not decreasing, obviously, because of inflation and things going on in the economy.
Good evening. It's part of your packet and part of the public packet. There was two sales tax-related presentations included. One is where we thought we would be, or we're trying to predict. So as Mr. Jolly said, the city had preempted previously, albeit two decades ago. So very hard to predict even what percentage of sales, which is the crux of the whole equation, in the county belonged just in the city limits of Augsburg. So historically, under your previous preemption, the city was about 10% of total sales in the county. Using that same logic when we did the budget, I know one of the references was to a meeting back in November 2022. We had hoped that the city would represent something a little bit more, 11% of the county's sales. And so when we talk about only collecting our one-half of 3% or the 2.5% with 1% of the home rule legislation, it was at 11% of the county's sales, and the variance there was over $2 million. So again, November 2022, you do your best with the information that you have. We did put forth a very conservative budget. We walked through that in that same presentation, how the $3 million came about in the 2022 budget, that we would be under the 6.44 sharing agreement. We estimated that to be around $900,000. In your bar chart, you can see the February, March, and April. There is, these are, the bar chart is based upon the months that the money is received. But that is the last three months of the sharing agreement, which is slightly above $900,000. So conservative estimate on the first quarter, not significantly ahead of where we thought we would be. So based upon what we knew.
That ended March 31st?
It ended February 28th, because that's the end of the sales tax quarter. But there is a lag in the state getting the money out to municipalities, because they have to reconcile what all the taxpayers have paid in. So if we go to this bar chart, we can see the light blue bars is all the money that the city received under the old sharing agreement with St. Lawrence County. We received our first preempted deposit of $86,000 in April. We currently have an agreement in also the home rule legislation that has been approved in the Assembly and Senate, saying that the county will share one-half of the home rule, which is a half a percentage. So we're receiving 1.5% of every taxable dollar spent in the city limits, and the county will be paying us on a quarterly basis, first payment to come in August, the other half a percentage of that. So the, I believe mine's black and white, so I apologize, but the green ones are what the city has received year-to-date. You can see, since the city has preempted, there's a bright red line across the center of the page that represents what we need to bring in as a city every month just to meet the $3 million. So we are at that line in our first two months of preemption with arguably no excess above the $250,000 of collections per month. And that is relying on the county's half a percent share and our successful home rule legislation to come in about two months. That's the only way we'll make up that 250 in those two months. Without that, we would not even be hitting the $250,000 target per month under a preemption. So year-to-date collections are $1,606,000. We are six months through the year, we double that. That's a pretty loose projection, but that would put the city at total collections for the year of 3.2 million. You do have to remember, just simply doubling that isn't necessarily the way to look at it, because for three of these months, we're under a much higher participation in sales tax with the 6.44 agreement in there.
In May and June, what's the 65,000 or 61,000?
That is the anticipated amount under the home rule sharing, the half a percentage.
Oh, that's not actual?
No, no. And at the bottom, it's anticipated, it's noted as being anticipated. That is the payment, Counselor, that we will not receive from the county until the entire sales tax monies of that quarter. So the quarter we're in right now is March, April, May, just ended, due June 20th. The county should pay us in August for that quarter. So we won't see that 65 or 61, but probably two more months.
Are these projections part of the, some of the issues with the box stores?
No, I mean, I don't know that yet, Counselor Powers. July will probably be the first opportunity that the state will be able to provide us a list of everybody who's paying to us.
I thought we already had that.
No, we had a list at one point of everybody in the county that was paying, because there was never a city list. So we've requested it, and I'm hoping sometime in July we'll get, you know, again, based on the people who have just recently been paying in these last few months.
Then these numbers in pink don't include, or the projections, you're not necessarily including any sales tax from Lowe's or?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, all right. Well, that was my question.
Yeah, so when she says projection, just meaning we haven't got the money yet. So we know in green, that's what we've received. So if you do the backwards math, the other half a percent, yeah. And we're only saying projection because we haven't received it.
Well, I mean, you just kind of basically earlier said that we don't want to get into the projection game, but here we are in the projection.
No, I'm only using projection. So we know what our sales tax collection was. So if you factor in, we know what it was, and our half a percent of that would equal this. What I'm saying, projection, meaning we don't, trying to project what the end of the year is going to look like. Like Angela's point here, right now we've made $1.6 million. So if you said, well, we do that again for the next six months, we make 3.2. Again, to her point, I wouldn't rely on that, because the first three months of the year were based on us getting 6.44% of the total county take.
It was 1.6, right? I wrote down 1.106.
1.6, it's on your sheet there.
1.6, it's in the right-hand margin, second bullet.
Got it.
So let's just say, the best-case scenario would be we maintain 1.6, would give us 3.2, and we budgeted for 3 million, so we'd be 200,000 over budget. But again, the first three months were based on that heavier 6.44 level agreement with the county. So I don't really see that coming in. And then if you look at, just to keep going for a second, if you look at the sales tax analysis dated February 2022 that we gave you, the far-left column is based on the city's total taxable sales being 9% of the total county take. And our projection with getting our 2% that we are now would have had us at $2.8 million. If you slide to the center, it's based on the city's total sales being 11% of the county's total sales, and we would have been at $3.4 million. So that shows you how we came up with a projection. We struck it somewhere in the middle at 3. Now, present date, if you look at what we've made collecting our own, and again, it's only two months of data, but if you take the data we have, right now we're tracking the city is about 8%, actually, it's 7.75%, but let's just call it 8% of the total volume of sales in the county. So that would fall below, you know, that 2.88 million, even if you add some inflationary factor to it, or it'd fall below 3. So I guess at the end of the day, what I'm trying to parlay is we're right about where we thought we'd be. We're right about $3 million. It's going to be a little less, it's going to be a little more, but it's, we're not going to see a million dollars increase. And if you, recently, the county just announced that they're 19% above where they were last year. So it isn't that we're below, it's just that we're below based on the new formula and the way we're doing it. So it isn't, sales tax is not slump, the county's up 19%. So our numbers are, you know, we're right there, and we shouldn't expect it anything higher. And sort of like we've said all along, you know, we had two sort of unbelievable years of sales tax growth during the COVID. You know, now we're seeing record inflation, likely heading towards a recession at some point. Like, we just have to stay, you know, prudent with what we think this number is going to be. So I think every month, we'll report this out. So, you know, council has six months of data right now, you'll have seven months. And as we get closer to the budget, I think you'll see, again, you know, where our projection for 2023 sales tax will, you know, there'll be a rationale for how we do that.
Why is January so low?
This chart that you're looking at is based upon the actual collection data. So the state only pays one payment in January, and that was the only payment received in the month of January. And then they go back to two payments a month subsequent in the following months. So the way, and I'd be happy to pass the schedule through, but it's, there's always a lag of when it makes it to the taxpayer. So for instance, that January 12th deposit that was received, covered, not to the taxpayer, but to the municipality, covered the months of November. You know, the actual sales tax collection period of November. So that is just the way the state distributes the sales tax. And then in February, they do part of December, part of January. So the chart that you're looking at is based on actual cash deposits.
So the numbers in May, in the green, is 1.5%, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's under preemption. I didn't do the math. Does it look like we're making the same or less under preemption based on those two months?
Less, say those two months preempting, and we were just to take those two as a sample, extrapolate that out over 12 months, we would be expecting only $3 million of sales tax. Last year, we were $4.7 million.
Okay, that's what I always feared.
So we're?
With the full penny, we'd be?
Yeah, the full penny would have us, if you look, we projected at 8.
4.6.
At 9%, it would have us at 3.5.
And while these are actual, through this, you might have a spike next month or months making up for previous months.
That's going, that's correct. The sales tax, just from my experience, ebbs and flows. You know, there's months that are high, consumer spending is high in certain months and not other months. So there may be a spike, Counselor, I don't know. I wouldn't bet that it would be a humongous spike entirely, but certainly we would take anything that we could get. Counselor Powers, to answer your question, if we had the 1%, if we're receiving, I'm just going to use rough math, $60,000 of that orangish kind of blocked-out portion, that if that represents a half a percent, we would double that to get to the 1%. So it would be $120,000 roughly a month, which would be 1.3 million roughly. So at a half a percent, you know, it's an extra $700,000 by getting that home rule legislation. That answers the question.
Yeah. And the county's using the state's figures to determine what the sales are in the city and giving us our share based on that?
It is published every single month, every time there's a distribution. It's a public document at the Tax Department, what Augsburg received as a distribution.
And that's what the county's using as a?
They should be using that.
Yeah.
When we receive the first check from the county, I mean, obviously, we'll do our due diligence and reconcile it and make sure that we've received what we would have anticipated to receive. And if there is a difference, Ms. Quall and myself would be able to reconcile that.
And so again, hopefully, we'll get that list in July, and then we'll take it the same way we did before, kind of the Counselor Powers point, the big things you can look at first, like, are the big box stores on there? Did Walmart get separated? Did Lowe's get separated? Did Price Chopper get separated? Because all those entities prior to now would have been reporting one, you know, one location into the county. So those will be the big ones we'll be looking at, you know, and then start moving through the sizes of business. The other thing we'll be able to see on there is, again, there's no way to know specifically, did every package get recorded correctly? But I think what we'll be able to show council, what the state has illustrated to us, is there's a pretty intrinsic system that, you know, marks maps where every package is dropped and is tax-coded properly. So we'll be able to see the Amazons, the walmart.com, you know, et cetera, that the packages are coming in. So I think those will be the big things to look at. You know, and then just going through, looking at the myriad of small business, and, you know, just trying to ensure that it's there. I think we've reported before of all the things that we do with the state, and you kind of shake your head, and you wonder if you're getting what they want you to know or what's to know, or if it's just a system, they don't understand how to explain it to the local municipalities. It felt like every time we talked with the sales tax group that's responsible for the billing and the mailing and the setting this up, it's a pretty sophisticated system. And I guess if you think, it would have to be every municipality in the state relies on this in some way. So again, I think we'll start that review process to ensure that we're getting everything that we're supposed to get.
So with tax and finance in Albany, let's say they can't give us the numbers because of the way the system's set up, because of all the stores they have in the county. We would, outside of preemption, would we need to work something out with the county ultimately to get a piece of whatever may be bought here in Augsburg?
No, they've assured us we're our own code. So any vendor got the notification, got the new code. I mean, they say that, I mean, all of our, kind of, let's say, worst fears that we telegraphed to them, they said, no, it's all, you know, not that there's, what they said was, there'll be a lot of mistakes, but they'll auto-correct. You may never see them. This one will have paid, this one shouldn't have paid. You know, the system will ultimately correct these. It's all based on addressed, a very sophisticated system of area coding. So I think, again, once we get the first report, we'll show you. But I, but so, and again, the big box stores are a good example of ones that will have been notified that you have to code, you know, you have to code where the location is. So they, I mean, I say, Angie, they sort of chuckled, you know, I think they get asked the same question by municipalities, are we getting this, are we getting that? I mean, I think you've answered the question a bunch of times. So again, I think hopefully in July, we'll have a product to be able to say, hey, here's what we got. And that way, council can get the same level of confidence that the system is working the way it's supposed to. It was interesting to me to hear them talk about how the online ordering and delivery worked, and that, again, it's based on when the delivery driver drops that package, you know, he punches the address in. It's not just to a zip code that covers areas that aren't just in Augsburg. That address has an area code that says it's in this taxing jurisdiction, and that way the sales tax goes here. And again, just a couple of things for, we've gotten some public questions on, you know, hey, get an auto dealership here. There's one that, a while ago, the state recognized the auto dealership tax. So if you buy a car in Syracuse, the sales tax comes back to the jurisdiction of your residence. So we get credit for that. We don't necessarily have to have an auto dealership to reap those benefits anymore, so.
Somebody asked me a question the other day about where the city line, and I know we've been over this before, we've had Matt's, maybe not when you were here, but what store in the?
Save-A-Lot.
Yeah, is it Save-A-Lot, it cuts down the middle?
I don't know if it's in the middle, but it's in the store. It's in the?
Who gets the sales tax?
It would depend how Save-A-Lot reports. So the initial, yeah, the initial reporting on any sales tax report starts with the taxpayer. So the sales tax form has every jurisdiction, and there's one specifically for Augsburg, the city of Augsburg. So if your taxpayer's not putting their sales there, the state is not getting those sales attributed to the city of Augsburg. So it would be on, the first responsibility is on the taxpayer themselves to properly report sales tax.
So we'll lobby, because it isn't a matter of us gotcha or anyone like that, because they don't, they only get a share of the county, they're not a tax collector. So to the taxpayer, it doesn't matter, it's the same amount of tax, whether a percentage goes here, a percentage goes there. But we'll look to see if Save-A-Lot got broke off, and then we'll lobby if need be for why that should be ours. But that's the one.
So if you're looking at Save-A-Lot, any store to the right is within the
Correct.
So the New Harbor Freight store that's coming is going to be in the So another question I have, and I was going to bring this up on the items for discussion. So Messina, for example, is having for the homecoming week, they're offering like a uh vendors on the sidewalks. Okay. So in St. Lawrence County Chamber Commerce, along with promoting this, all vendors, let's say, across the county to come into Messina. We're going to set you up with a square and for the whole week, you can set up a tent or a canopy or whatever and sell your wine or your this or your that or your jewelry and all these things. And I was going to suggest that Augsburg do this. Uh, and regardless, where does that sales tax money go? Does that go to the village of Messina? Or let's just say if somebody was from Herman, would it go back to Herman?
Because it would go to St. Lawrence County. Um, and the reason is, sales tax is based upon the true letter of sales tax says we pay tax at the point of destination, the destination of the sale. So if I'm transacting on Main Street Messina, I would put that on my St. Lawrence County line. If even if I'm an Augsburg vendor, okay? So if I'm an Augsburg vendor and I set up a little day booth outside here on Ford Street, those are my only two sales that month. One would go on St. Lawrence County to represent Messina, and the other one would go on the city of Augsburg line. So it's always based upon the point of sale that it happens. So if we're delivering, and I'm an Augsburg vendor, and I sell online via Etsy, and I mail that to Potstam, Augsburg does not technically get that sales tax. Now, whether every taxpayer understands that or not, I mean, sales tax is one of those things that has no logic to it. I will honestly tell you that. Um,
Well, it's broken anyways, right? There's there's a lot, but whether it's
Right, right, right. So that's, so it it's incumbent upon the taxpayer to know when they get that certificate of authority to be a vendor. You're almost signing up that yes, you understand the sales tax laws, but
It's I I guess the vendor, not not the person paying the tax. And to your report, yeah, and remember, Messina doesn't collect sales tax. They they only reap the benefit with the whatever the percentage the county gives them.
Right. So the answer to my question, and if somebody was from Herman, and they set up a tent and wine or jewelry,
Doesn't matter.
that money would go to the county.
It would go on the county line, correct?
Because it, because unless you're in Augsburg, we're the only other sales tax collecting jurisdiction in St. Lawrence County except St. Lawrence County.
It's a tough one, because
Unless they were an Augsburg vendor already.
If they were an Augsburg vendor and all of their sales literally crossed the desk in Augsburg, in the city of Augsburg, everything would get reported or should be being reported on the city of Augsburg line. The moment I leave the city limits and I'm physically transacting in another municipality, my sales tax should be reported on the county line.
Then that's just the opposite of what you told me, you know, a vendor coming to Augsburg, right?
Anytime the transaction is physically happening in the city of Augsburg, it doesn't matter where your business is located. The sales amount would go on the city of Augsburg's sales tax line. So does that help?
I think I think that's accurate. If some vendors came into Augsburg and they sold things in Augsburg, we collect the sales tax.
Yes. My biggest example, sorry. My biggest example of that is a contractor. Contractors work throughout the entire county, correct? So I might be a contractor whose home base is in Messina. Do a lot of work in Messina, Potstam, Herman, it doesn't really matter. All of those sales go on the St. Lawrence County line. The moment I come into a repair job in the city, I would need to report the tax on that on the city of Augsburg sales tax taxable sales line.
If they do that.
If they do that, that's It's more paperwork, so
If they're doing it quarterly, they they might forget about what they did in Augsburg along with all their other stuff.
And we talked about that when we talked about preemption here before the council, because every business has been doing this just one line item um for decades. So they now have to change uh their recording to specifically capture the city of Augsburg's sales differently.
What's the effective date? I forgot in the home rule.
Uh, so the county has agreed to process that half a percent effective March 1st. So we then it went to um the Assembly and the Senate, which have both signed off on this legislatively. Um, but my last update was that the governor has not signed the bill yet.
Yeah, I was wondering what the effective date was in the bill.
It's would say effective immediately. When you read the bill, it says effective immediately. So the fact that the county has agreed to March 1 in their resolution, it would be March, I would assume the March 1 date.
Anyone else? Thank you, Angela.
You're welcome.
We do not have any proclamations this evening. We do not have any public hearings. So this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium. You have five minutes. Is there anyone remotely?
The first individual is registered as Mia Skelly, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted. Open. Mayor, it appears that person's having, it looks like two devices are too close together. There are no other names.
We have one here.
This gentleman here stood up. Oh, missed him. I'm sorry.
Hello, council. My name is Robert Van Horn. I live within the city. I just uh first like to start off by saying thank you for everything you guys do. I'd like to also thank Angela Andrea for the planning, what they do with the numbers. Uh, I'd just like to come here and up get an update on skate park. I'm sure it's what you guys all think I'm here for, but uh I'd also like to talk about um other things. You know, I know that there's not a whole lot of money, extra money for stuff like that, especially if there's no money coming back from it. So just an update on skate park would be nice. But, um, you know, with the things going on with the whole country and inflation, uh, I feel like we need more community. Uh, you know, you guys are talking back and forth about the amount of police officers we have, amount of protections that we have in the city. I feel like it, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be so much of a problem if we had more community, if people talked to their neighbors more often, if if we had more community events where people could come together and talk amongst each other and get to know each other better, you know, and uh I feel like this recreational center that um you guys talk about with the Ready Project could bring people together, uh, as long as it's it's done in the right way. And I'd like to just put forth that uh maybe think about some kind of self-defense, so something, bringing somebody in to teach young adults and and adults uh some some sort of self-defense as the governor did put a ban on body armor in New York State. And, you know, red flag law is going up uh all over the country. So uh, thank you for everything. Thank you for letting me speak.
Robert, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, Mayor, can I ask him a question? I just want to know, how's the skate park? Are people happy with it right now? Is it better than it was? I mean,
Well,
I've gone by a few times and I see kids use it. I see kids using it on bicycles.
Yeah, a lot of a lot of kids use bikes, um, which, you know, it's it's been used as a bike park for pretty much its entire life lifetime. Uh, people, kids go down there on bikes, people go on skateboards, scooters, rollerblades. Um, uh, the general uh opinion that I've gotten from people that I've talked to um is that uh, you know, the kids like it over there because it's more secluded. You know, the adults kind of have the same opinion except for abandoned buildings, you know, um, the bar so much, I guess, isn't a problem pertaining to people's opinions, because as far as they're aware, it's just people are cordial, the kids are cordial, you know, um. But uh, I did speak with the owner of the tiki bar just tonight after that fire, and um he said that um he did tell me that he did see an uptick in um people breaking into that uh Ramada. So it's something I brought up when you guys originally moved the park. I knew that, you know, preteens, people, you know, would be, you know, delinquents, you know, they would be breaking into the building more often, you know, it's just human, human nature. We're we're curious. You know, uh, but um, as far as I as my opinion, I feel I just want an update uh as it is a part of a major part according to the budget uh for the recreation, you know, what is it, half a million dollars you guys got set aside for recreation? And I just uh would like an update.
Would another coat of uh sealant help? Because the contractors offered to come back at no cost and put another coat on?
Honestly, I I don't think it helped at all in the first place. Was it, is there any more question?
What about, did you participate in the in the city's survey as to where the speed?
Yeah, yeah, I put my vote in for the area down there at the um, next to the the theater.
Okay. Interesting. Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, I feel like it's a great area. The way they got it plowed out and everything, you could put in a staircase, a couple of ramps, maybe like a quarter bowl. Um, you could make that whole area concrete.
What do you do for bathrooms and water?
Um, myself, I usually go before I go and skate.
Do you need access to, you see the need for access to a bathroom down there?
Um, i- if it's right there off the uh the theater there, you could go down to the community center for the bathroom. There's a water fountain down there as well. Um, it's not very far. It's literally downhill the whole way, so.
Do you think the city of Augsburg, there's enough interest? And, you know, Mr. Jelly tonight was talking, we'll start to set aside some money for different projects. Do you think there's enough interest and long-term interest to the city should maybe think about setting aside money for a cement, something permit? Because of the cement skate park, do you think this is a short-term fad or? Do you think it's
Well, I don't really understand the industry. It is. It it is.
I want to know some opinions. What what do you think?
It it is an Olympic sport now, skateboarding. Um, so there's that. Uh, as far as interest, I feel like uh a lot of people don't, a lot of people still don't know that you guys moved the skate park. Um, I get that a lot. A lot of, I just got that tonight. I went down there and a couple of people that were down there said that they just they just found out that they that you guys moved the skate park down. So I can't really say that there's a whole lot of skateboarders that I've seen. I I think that a lot of the skateboarders in Augsburg go outside of the city, maybe Syracuse, Watertown, to indoor parks. Um, I s- I I think there is something, especially with the the bikers. There's there's a lot, there's a lot of kids riding around on BMX bikes and and um they kind of go together. There's there's definitely interest.
Good. Because I just think, you know, I'm speaking for myself. I don't know what you guys want or need. We're talking about a budget time. I think you set aside a little bit of money for repairs and things like that, or what you need. We all seem to have a little different idea. Do they, do they want a grand, 600, 700,000 dollar cement park? Or do they, are they happy with what you got here? Maybe a couple more items to ride your bikes on there, them or the bikers? We don't, we don't know what you want, you know?
It'd be nice, it'd be nice to get an up or get some kind of opinion from uh kids that ride on the bikes. I try to stay away from, you know, adolescents, you know, I, but um I I, because I don't have children myself, I just tend to um stay away from, you know, kids.
What do you think would be a, what's probably a good move? What do you think would be a good uh uh way to raise public awareness that the park is there? And and then maybe we could start getting more feedback.
Uh, you guys use a lot of social media, I'm sure. Um, I don't. Uh, so updating the city website, maybe it so that it shows what's going on within the city right on the homepage would be nice. Um,
Signage, baby?
Yeah, some some sort of something, even just for events um that are going on within the city. I know that um there there is a a news kind of thing that they just put in for the website. But uh it's not as much as what I see from Facebook, you know, these these social media websites. I feel like people, the city posts there more often on what's going on, and I feel like it should be posted to the city website instead of social media. Um, any more questions?
All set.
Okay, I'd just like to leave off with, I watched a lot of the meetings online, and please just speak into the microphone.
Um, Kathy, I believe you have one letter.
That's correct, ma'am. To Augsburg City Council, my name is William Hosmer, and I am the coordinator of the youth baseball and softball programs for the Augsburg Kiwanis Club. Last week, both the baseball and softball seasons came to a conclusion. This year, we manage just over 325 children on 26 teams and 20 umpires while hosting over 140 baseball and softball games at Montroy Park, in addition to having a countywide tournament. On behalf of the Augsburg Kiwanis Club, I would like to thank Shane Brown, Mackenzie Cole, and the entire DPW crew for maintaining Montroy Park and making this season successful. They have been fantastic to work with and have gone above and beyond to help. We can't run this program without the cooperation from the city of Augsburg, and we look forward to many more years of working together. Thank you. Bill Hosmer.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have our consent agenda. Set the claim to the enumerated a general fund warrant, number 11 dash 2022, the amount of 588,471 dollars and 99 cents. Library warrant, number 11 dash 2022, the amount of $0. And capital fund warrant, number 11 dash 2022, the amount of 36,991 dollars and 79 cents. And community belt on 11 dash 2022, the amount of 75 dollars and 98 cents. And community renewal fund warrant, number 11 dash 2022, the amount of $0, as audited, be the same hereby, or ordered paid, I so move.
I'll second it.
Kathy, would you please go over?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Jellaba?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scampoli?
Yes.
Approved.
And we do not have any appointments tonight. So, and we do not have any uh items for council action tonight. So this will bring us to old business, and we'll start with the city manager, Stephen Jellin.
Uh, council, an update on the beach. We have submitted everything to the Department of Health as of last Thursday. Um, don't see anything at this point that's going to impede us uh from opening the beach. Um, however, we do need the um the final stamp of approval from the Department of Health. All of our samples were good. The only high sample we had uh was in the second day post the significant storm we had uh about a month ago. Uh, excuse me, the the very next day, the regions were were right back down. So again, we've submitted everything. Uh, I think all the questions that they had uh last year that they wanted us to answer, uh, engineering questions, design, all those things were were satisfied. So I hope to hear from um Department of Health tomorrow, the next day, and we'll be aiming for uh for opening the beach uh on the weekend if if that happens. If it runs close, uh, we'll have to to start with the next weekend. But soon as I know, I'll advise council, and we will advise the public and open it just as soon as we can.
I heard they were waiting on an updated engineering report.
I heard they were waiting on an updated engineering report.
Received it last Thursday.
Okay.
Which, which ultimately was just waiting for the last of the samples to come in, the documentation from the samples as part of the complete reports.
Great.
Um, and four-twenty Lafayette Street, any update?
Andrea?
We just received the complete, completed appraisal, uh, that was done by Varley Appraisal Group um for that property. And the appraised value came back at forty-five thousand dollars. So the city uh is going to recommend putting that up for sale and that will be included along with the list of other properties. I think for your first July meeting, July eleventh.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. Um, ready, update?
Uh, so the Maple City Trail, the contractor, which is J E Sheehan, is set to mobilize uh to begin work on the repairs to the. Trail and seawall beginning July fifth. Uh, unfortunately, uh, this, unfortunately, fortunately, this does mean that that portion of the trail will be closed. Um, until further notice, right now, we're looking at a completion date near year end. Uh, so it will be closed effectively for the rest of the summer and fall season. Um, but we're really excited to get that project started. And um in terms of the Saint Lawrence River, Morsete Park um project. The bid specs are, we're just finalizing them, those will be published um on June thirtieth. And the legal notice locally will be published on July one in North Country now. The bids are due back on August eleventh, and the intent is to bring those to council at your second August meeting on August twenty-second.
Thank you.
Mayor, just to, to follow on that, we talked to earlier, just one council will be thinking about this, the match for uh this. Phase of the ready project uh right now would stand at seven hundred and six thousand two hundred dollars. So I believe their recommendation from staff will be to include that um in a, in a modification to the budget uh from the fund balance, so we have that paid. Um, but it's certainly something council could elect to uh bond for instead of using our, our money to pay for it. Again, we'll, we'll talk more in detail um about this when we look at the budget modifications, but I just uh. As this project is kicking off, this is just kind of keeping us uh up to speed, what we just talked about, we want to make sure we don't do is lose sight of there is a match in there. And while we have ban authority from council to cash flow the project to keep it going, this project likely will finish in twenty-twenty-two. So we might not have to pay the ban off until next year, you know, either way, this seven hundred and six thousand will have to come from, from our funds. Uh, that we do not have budget for in twenty-twenty-two, so I just want to toss that out there for council to, to be considered as we move towards that meeting.
Um, so this brings us to old business, anyone? I'm sorry, new business.
Any update on uh? O M H property?
No, nothing that, uh, excuse me, counselor, nothing that we've um. We, they contacted Mr. Vital, uh, I've got us, just set up a time with him to uh discuss the current actions they're taking and then what we want to do to go forward. Um. I, I, it's, just, it's next, next in line.
Were we invited to the last meeting at the, of Governor Hokel's uh recent commission that she put together?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Anybody on council invited to that meeting?
Yeah.
Anybody attend? You share it with everybody from now on, we can have a representative there to assist us.
Yeah.
Thank you. No response back from the Environmental Facilities Corp about a meeting or?
Uh, nothing official, but I've sent a follow-up just to ensure that they got our letter, uh, we got that confirmation, they got it, so uh, they will, we'll hear back on the meeting.
And what are we doing for grants for the Regional Economic Development Council?
Uh, so the next council meeting, uh, counselor will have the full brief on all the, the CFA, the grants, etc.
I have means uh for discussion?
New business? Is that new business or old business?
We did old business, new business.
So new business? No, they're not.
I think conservation was, I think, in old business, mayor.
Last weekend, uh.
Still in old business.
A, we have an invasive species on the Aswagatchie River. Now, it's gotten past the dam. And it's called the uh, the water chestnut, and it, and it just. It, it just, it's, it's crazy, it's.
The dam and it's spreading like crazy. Upriver, not the one here.
It's gotten, as far as I know, past the Hubelton Dam.
Right, right.
And speculation it's already passed the Uwear Dam.
It's running right along the shore.
It's, it's coming, and uh, it's my understanding, the state hasn't had a lot of action on that yet. Uh, I think, uh, you know, I, I watched those guys this weekend, they're, they're trying to literally dredge it, clean it. Get it out of there, it's probably going to be an ongoing process forever. Uh, unless they could eradicate it, and it's, I think to, you know, I know all the towns up and down. Uh, the Saint Lawrence, not all, but several have uh, have already, they're alarmed and they're donating money to the cause. Uh, if Augsburg wants to consider that, and more importantly, I think Augsburg, since the Aswagatchie flows right here. Uh, we should be contacting our, our state representatives to uh fully fund, clean up, clean up this, this species.
Do we support a, maybe possibly support a letter of some sort to the uh D C Commissioner and?
A, a letter and maybe a resolution supporting that, uh. That's, so that was why I, I had under new business. Considering resolution or something like that. It's, it's pretty crazy, and if this spreads down here, uh, I, I think we're going to be in trouble, so. Not only us, Saint Lawrence, anything along the Aswagatchie. Uh, it, it was pretty crazy, and uh, we had a business from Florida come up with three machines. And just donated her time uh to try and uh. Clean up what was in Hubelton, I don't, I can't imagine, I mean, I was there for an hour or two. And I, I can't imagine they put much of a dent into it even on that day, I mean, this is going to take weeks of uh. And, and if we just let it go, it's going to, it's going to get even worse, so. I'd like to see council take some sort of action, uh, push the state to uh get involved here.
You have consensus council to draft a letter to the D C Commissioner here and uh. Seek to have a, you know, I don't know if a study would be in order, Andrea, or, I don't know. I would imagine it'll be.
You know what it is.
Somewhere, but.
Like that stuff in Lake George.
Yeah.
Black Lake, same situation, Black Lake, yeah. Yeah, this is even worse, this is like, makes, makes Black Lake, uh, I forget what they call that stuff, but uh. It, it makes it look like a, nothing compared to this monster, so.
We'll run down the information and, and bring it back, excuse me.
Good, thank you.
Two things here real quick, um, that technically they're under old business, any communications with the volunteer rescue squad, the defibrillator?
Excuse me, uh, no, sirs, uh, we've uh submitted a foil, uh, requesting the financial information, uh, the operational information we asked for. Originally told we were going to get it, uh, now they, now they don't want to give it to us, so I'm just going back, making a, an additional request to uh, to get the information we asked for. I, I'm not really sure what the hindrance is, sort of beyond caring at this point, I just feel it's not appropriate. For city council to continue to pour money into any organization, especially one that provides a critical service to the city that we don't understand. That their financial stability and surety is there, um, I think it, it, it just, it just makes us sense, so I'm, I'm um. You know, I don't understand why the, what the argument would be to, to providing that information.
I mean, we ultimately, we agreed to, to fund two defibrillators, right, they just picked up brand new rescue squad.
Hundred percent.
You know, whether they got it with a grant or not, or any matching kind of aspect, I don't know, and I don't care, but at the end of the day, they have a new unit and they're lacking a defibrillator. A life-saving device that could potentially help our citizens, and I, I, I don't see.
They, they have all the devices, I don't know who told you that, they got the devices last year, they made one payment, got the devices, this is their second payment, they have all the. They have all the information and I. I, I can only say, you know, I'm, I'm growing concerned more and more at the apprehension to cooperate and provide verifying information. This city has a responsibility to make sure, as we argue here at many meetings, that emergency services are viable. And stable and adequate, and this is the second most used emergency service in the city, I am just simply trying to ensure that this council doesn't end up with a, a problem. In how it provides emergency medical services if it, if uh, if, if the organization isn't able to continue doing that.
Draft up an agreement, if they go under, we get the defibrillators back.
Honestly, counselor, I'm, it's not a matter of the money, it's really, the defibrillators aren't the issue, the, the issue is.
You're saying you're not going to move forward with them until you see their, their, their financials?
It's not, I'm not saying I'm not going to, it's in the budget, you've directed the money to be paid, I'm just trying to do some due diligence before we hand over uh the money, that's all.
Set up an agreement with them, and if they go under, then we get our defibrillators back.
Honestly, counselor, if they go under, you have a lot bigger problems than if they have a defibrillator money or not.
I'm more aware of that, so.
I'm trying to forestall the larger problem here and ensure that we don't have a larger problem brewing, you, you got a letter.
You that you're actually making more of an issue out of it.
You, you chose not to pay attention then to the letter from the county that said, emergency medical services in Saint Lawrence County is in crisis, Augsburg is not exempt from that, sir. I mean, I mean, they're just not, I mean, you, you yourself have.
I'm well aware.
On a bunch of occasions, why.
I read and what I read and what I don't read.
What are you reading?
The fact of the matter, well, we agreed to give them two defibrillators.
We did.
All my statement is, I didn't want all the fluff behind it.
We didn't agree to give many defibrillators, you're wrong about that, we agreed to provide them money.
Let's bring, let's bring the O B R S in here for a presentation.
Can show up anytime they want to, I don't stop them from coming. Show them anything they want to.
Okay.
It's all the meeting for that, okay?
So I've lost that.
One other piece, um, last meeting, we agreed to bring out a police officer, where are we with that?
Uh, Chief Kearns is working, uh, the list of candidates that he's got, uh, I believe he's made a, a selection and getting them slated for the academy in August.
Transfer. Because there was no transfer in the hopper?
There, there was uh one transfer candidate eligible that I'm aware.
Is it a consideration with the chief?
Person, no matter, if you want to talk about it, we can adjourn to executive session.
Uh, so on the police, just to piggyback off, you reminded me. Uh, all over town, I'm, I'm hearing rumors that you're going back on an eight-hour shift, is that accurate?
Kind of would say person, I'm at at this point, concert, we, one of our journalists, let's do it.
Okay, let's do it, talk about both of them. So, that's it, that's all.
We've got an executive session planned, so we can cover it then, so, yeah.
Good. Uh, did we ever get an opinion on the whole Stevie Stock boy calling or whatever from our city attorney? And, you know, and, and I'm not trying to antagonize the situation, and I think. Maybe if the mayor, when people have these personal presentations, just remind them that this is. Time to talk city business or something like that, but did we get an opinion on, on that, because just worry about another lawsuit.
But we did, and I mean, the city attorney identified that it's uh clearly a, a violation of our administrative regulations, you have to identify yourself.
Okay.
In, in the council meetings, correct? Not necessarily in a foil request.
No, in a, in a foil request.
That's the, that's council's recommendation?
It's a recommendation based on, it's, is information given, uh, based on that, the council on, on governments. Uh, uh advises, you know, their opinion is someone can be anonymous. Uh, this, this isn't an anonymous uh person that wasn't put through with that, it's quite frankly, just somebody continuing to, to mock. Now the system and, and disrupt city government operations, I mean, it's, it's a fact of it.
So if somebody came up though and said, I, I don't want to say my name, that's fine, right? Because I think open meetings law does say.
Of course, hundred percent. Yeah, there's no, so you can, you can alias anything when you call in here, your name could be John Jones on here, it doesn't necessarily matter.
Okay. What else to have, water chestnut? Are we on, what, what are we on? Oh, I T, the I T system. Are we worried about it getting hacked? Did we get hacked recently?
That's not the point, sir.
Somebody sent me an email saying they're worried about our I T system getting hacked. Citizens or something like that.
I think that was me. I don't think I said hacked, though.
Oh.
I think I said I'm concerned about the level of, of people, including the, the Stevie Stock boy infiltration, things like that. People that are trying to overwhelm our, our systems, our daily systems, Kathy has more foil requests than she could possibly answer in five years, much less a year. And I'm concerned that these people, if they don't continue to get what they want, then they'll just continue to move on to further disrupt things, in, including disrupting our, our systems. I don't, I wouldn't say that we've been hacked, but you've all received, uh, you all received emails that, that give the appearance of being the mayor or somebody else. Somebody, somebody's found a way again to, to route the, the email system.
So our system did get shut down.
I think it was three years ago.
Two years ago.
Like twenty nineteen or twenty twenty.
So we should have a pretty good system in place now, correct?
You spent, you spent a lot of money fixing it and you spent a lot of money putting uh things in place, yeah.
Okay. And so the only other item that I had was if we could open up a discussion with Saint Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce. Uh, if you guys are in agreement to it, getting vendors here, maybe doing something like Messina's doing, uh, any other ideas open? Uh, I'm thinking, you know, library park, of course, it's, that's their issue. Uh, when I looked at the uh, the website from Messina. Uh, they had businesses that allowed these vendors to come in next to their business, maybe to complement each other, things like that. I just want to create more of a sense of vibrancy in Augsburg. And I don't know if, if we did it, for example, during Seaway Festival Week, if we had to go through that committee. Or if we just picked another week and said, let's, let's just keep this going in Augsburg. Maybe do it in August or sometime in July, uh, I, I think that would be. A, a nice thing to do in this town and create a little more vibrancy and maybe people coming would, would visit and frequent our, our, our restaurants and things like that. Anything we can do to support the business of Augsburg should be on our agenda. So I saw that idea and I said, how come we aren't doing this?
I think we, um, so some of the ideas we had about, uh, you know, whether it's the farmer's market or just kind of a festival day for small businesses, I think. Those are all things we had some discussion last year, and I, I know just part of our, just our temporary impediment was not knowing specifically when Morsete Park was going to be. Uh, was going to be tore up, it certainly could have been this year, it, it doesn't look like it will be till probably later in the year, but I think uh. I think now it's a good time, you know, we're, I think we're working a little closer now with Pride and Beautification, we've got the Recreation Committee back up and. And I think with our city staff, those, it's all good discussions to start having now, so that as we kind of part of the revival of Morsete Park and everything looking. You know, new and beautified, that we, we plan these kind of events in that, in that location, I, I think for sure we're, we're on the right track for that.
And on that discussion, uh, I don't know if you were here yet, Steve, but uh. I think John brought it up, uh, when you guys first got on council to allow restaurants and bars to set up tables on the sidewalks and. And we ended up passing some resolutions supporting that, and uh. And what a, what a great time to bring this up again and, and remind everybody they're welcome to do that, uh, so long as they lead the thirty-six inches or whatever it was for the. Uh, the handicap accessible and, and what have you, uh. Just to create some more vibrancy in this town, especially on our main drags and everywhere else, so we, we did change the code to do that for people, so.
We did, and I, I think then immediately the COVID happened, so I think we'll kind of go out just to remind people that that um. You know, that option is there now, people can, can still do that, so.
See camps to full advantage of it.
Yeah.
State street inside there. Yeah. That's all I got.
I have one thing. Have we looked into um any fishing tournaments or anything, a lot of times they're booking a year to eighteen months out. Um, looking forward probably towards next summer, is there anything that we have? Um, in our sights that we could start preparing for or looking at, or has anyone reached out to us looking to host?
I reached out to Counselor Kennedy, all the contacts I had the last time you and I spoke about it, I've heard back from a couple as far as planning for out years into now. Uh, twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six, um, and we're expecting to host a small tournament again this year that we did uh last year, but. But uh, to answer your question, yes, we are looking at, again, as we're getting the, the finality and the. But does the construction time down on the Morsete Park, you know, again, trying to, to start planning for uh, for, you know, greater public events that we can support.
Yeah, I'd like to see something next year as well, and um, just to do something different, it'd be interesting to reach out to the Walley Association and. And, you know, allocate the money for it, and I, I think that'd be a great event. And, and the walleye fishing, with what's been done here in the Aswagatchie, it, it may be a site that they're interested in.
Absolutely.
We actually, I think Mike and I were both on council and, and the city made a video of, of the Walleye stalking program. Really tried to promote it for a year.
That was in the infancy.
Yeah.
Now you're pulling 10 pounders.
That was good, yeah.
The International City Managers Association reached out last week. They've identified Augsburg as a city that's, excuse me, got a lot of progress going on, a lot of things happening in the St. Lawrence. So one of the offerings there is they'll, they'll reach out to 10 or 12 communities, will submit information. And if we're selected as one of the top five, they'll actually prepare a five-minute sort of promotional video on, on all those things, you know, Augsburg that we presented at their national conference in late September. So we're going to meet, oh, them next week and, you know, provide the information they'll be looking for. It's a scoring process, I believe, of, of who gets selected, but I'll send all the council the information as they get it. I just got one today, kind of showing the last few years of these videos they've done. They're, they're real nice little five-minute, you know, segments, kind of the same thing you expect to see from a chamber, but you have some government entity, people, private sector, you know, event people talking about, you know, why Augsburg, et cetera, why whatever community. So, so I think that, that could be good. City would have a little bit of a, a buy-in on that as far as some of the video time and things like that, but we would end up with a product that would be ours when it was all said and done. And again, the, the marketing would begin at their annual conference every year, so I thought that was something of note. So I'll have more information on that next meeting.
So this brings us to citizen participation.
Sir, just items for discussion, if you, I just wanted, another discussion items for, from staff, I just, again, I want to just reference the chart that's in your packet, the 2019 to 22 revenue versus expenditures. Again, I just, I want to keep asking council to focus on this. This, this really is our last light meeting. I just want to make sure that I throw that out there for everybody. We, we have, we'll have packed agendas from here forward. July will be really reconciling where we are, the current budget changes that have to be made to the budget modifications, et cetera. And then starting August, September will be water sewer and then, and then again, as talked last week, we're going to start the budget process in October. But I, I just want to, again, I, I want to emphasize where we are in our, in our vision with this and that the chart I gave you, 2019 to 2027 was, was meant just that. This was kind of a long-term, you know, where do we see the city going? We made some assumptions, revenue increases 4% per year, salaries increase 3%, health insurance, other expenses, et cetera. Again, this, this was intended when we presented this back in February, if I'm not mistaken, February, you know, to, to be just that, a long-term projection. And at that point, I think, you know, we showed you that on the chart, we, we believe we have a deficit in the $700,000 range at that point, which doesn't include, again, the $500,000 infusion to this year's budget from the ARPA money. So really that put us then at 1.2 million. I thought we were pretty clear about that. I went back and looked at the notes, so I'm hundred percent sure now we did report that in there. But again, this chart just demonstrating to you that if we're moving the organization as it stands today forward into those years, you know, this is what, this is what we look at by way of a deficit. And the assumptions are really were generic use assumptions. I'll just take the first one, revenue increasing 4% a year. Our revenue is not increasing 4% next year. It's not, not possible. So that assumption right away is, is gone. So you can assume that this chart gets wider. Salary increase to, to 3%, this is one of those years where everybody's getting more on average, three and a half. Health insurance, again, we, we used the historic average, keeping in mind, we didn't see any increase the last two years. I don't, I don't, that's not going to happen the third year, so we're going to see at least seven and a half percent, I, I would expect, after two years of seeing nothing. And then other expenses at a rate of 3% per year, and I just want to, you know, draw council's attention to that. That's everything else other than those three up there. And again, we're in a period of unprecedented inflation. So, so all these assumptions we made back in February were just that, they were generic assumptions to show you the direction we thought we were headed in, which was, you know, expenses exceeding our revenue by, by the dollar amounts that are indicated there. That information is, is only, let's call it gotten, gotten worse, the gap has increased. We're trying to keep you updated as we, as we do that. So we're spending time doing these, these briefings and providing these products, so council has a, a feeling for, for where we're going and, and the work that's going to be ahead of us in the budget. So I, I just ask council at this point if there's any information that you're not getting, if there's any illustration, if there's any product that you need to see that will help lay out for you, our financial status, whether it is our debt that you received an extensive presentation on this year, if it's previous budgets, if it's status of contracts, we'll be working the health insurance starting next week, so we know what that increase is. But these are all the things we're culminating together. So again, I, I want to, I want to put out the same caution, and I guess I'll do it every meeting from here till we approve a budget. Right now, our numbers indicate in the neighborhood of 1.2 to 1.6 million dollars. I, I expect that number will be higher when we hit the budget point. I, I really believe that. So we've just got to start thinking how we're going to close that gap. To knock down the obvious questions, if you reversed the entire last two years of tax reductions, you would only close that gap by about 1.1 million dollars. So, so if we reversed the entire tax decrease that we needed to do to get ourselves out of trouble with the constitutional tax limit, that if we put that back, we'd be back in the same trouble that we were in, we, we would barely be breaking even to where we are now. There's nothing additional there for, for more, more staff, more programs, or, or more debt payments. So it's the reason I'm going to ask council to start the budget process at least a month early this year because we're, we've got a lot of hard decisions ahead of us. And I, again, I, if there's anything we can provide greater than what we're trying to do month by month, so that we're not flooding you with overwhelming amounts of data. And I feel like one of the flaws in the budget process is we start, you know, the time clock with about a 45-day window, we flood information from three enterprises, water sewer and general fund. We try to, we try to flood all that information, ask council to make decisions in about a 45-day period. And I don't think that results in a, in a good, a good product. So we're, we're going to start earlier, but I'm willing to start as early as need be. That's why we're feeding this information now, so council feels prepared. If there's, again, something else we can do, please, please request that.
Thank you, Steve. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address city council, please come down to the podium. You have two minutes. Kathy, anyone remotely?
The first individual is registered as Mia Scally and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Appears your line is open. The line appears open, mayor. I'm not sure how you want me to proceed. Yes, sir. I do not see any other hands raised.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to deployment or employment, motion, discipline, suspension of a particular person or corporation.
I'll say that. Kathy? Are we adjourned from this meeting too? Do we anticipate action?
Oh, well, I was going to say that after we call. Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.